Call to order, and if you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carrie, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure, Councilmember Shippers.
Here.
Ellen Bass.
President.
Ingalls. King.
Here.
Mayor Philkins.
Here.
And at this time, if we could get a motion to approve the agenda as it's been presented.
I'd make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. We'll go ahead and open the floor for our first public comment. We do ask if you come forward to please state your name and then write your name and address for the clerk. And we also ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less.
Good evening, I'm Mike Philkins, and I'm here on behalf of two different events. I'm a member of the Cadillac Arts Council, and they host every year the Cadillac Festival of the Arts. And I just wanted to thank the city and the city staff formally in a meeting for the venue that we have to run that festival. It becomes a really important part of our marketing to have a successful event, to have such a wonderful space to hold events. And on behalf of the Arts Council, which is a commission of the city, I want to thank you and the staff for all their 11th hour assistance this year in some unique things that we decided to do, which required us to work with Lansing and some licensing that wasn't finalized until they were actually meeting about it in Lansing, and Marcus helped with some of the last-minute details. I'm also here on behalf of the Cadillac Craft Beer Festival, which I chair, which was extremely successful this year inexplicably during a very rainy day. And again, it's because we have a wonderful space in the Cadillac Commons to market. We get tremendous assistance from the city staff in putting on, and those are two very big festivals that occurred during 2022. We're looking forward to holding them again in 2023. And again, thank you very much to city council, city staff for their assistance and providing such a beautiful space for us to market our events. Did I stay under three minutes?
Well, under three minutes.
He would've known if he didn't.
I'm sure it would.
Seeing no one else, we'll close public comment and move to the approval of the consent agenda. This evening, we do have the minutes from the regular meeting that was held on December 5th.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Councilmember Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, and that takes us to the community spotlight for this evening. Marcus, would you like to introduce that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This evening, we have a special opportunity to recognize board and commission members that are essentially volunteers to the city for both 2021 and 2022 service awards. And then, following that recognition that our mayor will do, we'll introduce our Public Safety Director to recognize members from the Police Auxiliary Program. Program doesn't exist anymore, so this has been a long time coming to do this. But we'd like to also recognize those folks as well. So Carla?
Wonderful. Okay, well, we'll go ahead and start with recognition of the boards and commissioners, excuse me, the boards and commissions, their volunteers. And we'll start with the 2021 Service Awards. I would ask that if your name is called, that you would come up and accept your certificate, and then we'll take an opportunity to also take a photo, just to keep it in memory forever. So, we'll start with five-year awards for 2021. The first one goes to Chris Crowley, who has spent those five years with the Downtown Development Authority. The second one is Stephen Barnes, also five years with the Downtown Development Authority. Chris Huckel, 15 years with the Downtown Development Authority. Mike Dolak, 15 years with the Cadillac Housing Commission. Kevin Fent, 20 years with the Planning Commission. Want to come up? There you are, and if you want to just hang out for a minute, then we'll get our photo, okay? Awesome. Okay, and the last one for 2021 is Jim Blackburn, who has served on our Civil Service Commission for 25 years. Round of applause for them.
Jim was here.
He was?
He was here, yeah. We'll go ahead and take both pictures after we get done with this first one, okay? Okay, so next is the 2022 Service Awards. The first one goes to Michelle Carter, who has served five years on the Courthouse Hill Historic District. John Eel, who has also served five years on the Courthouse Hill Historic District. Joseph Baumann, who has served five years on the Planning Commission. Carl Holder, who has served five years on the Cadillac Wexford Airport Authority. Brian Warner, who has served five years on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Stephen King, five years on the Cadillac City Council. Wait, I gotta find the right one. I'm gonna give you the wrong one. Sorry, this would've worked out great if everybody had been here, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, very much. And then Charles Labarre, Maple Hill Cemetery Board, 10 years. Gwen Dubravik, Courthouse Hill Historic District, 10 years. Judy Coffey, Cadillac Housing Commission, 15 years. And Regan O'Neil, 25 years on the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Are any of those people here, and I'm not recognizing? Are you Charles?
That's Carl.
Carl Holder, I apologize. Congratulations. So, I have to go backwards now, here.
And we'll make sure, Mayor, that everyone gets.
All right.
Their certs.
Thank you. I'm not finding it very easily, so.
I'll put one in.
Yeah.
You might have to go back another one, maybe look at this one.
Sure, that'd be great.
Carl, thank you for your service.
Absolutely. There, I found him. I found him. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And if you would like to come up and just get one picture, that would be great.
You don't have to use wide angle.
Right.
Do you guys want to be in the picture?
Oh, okay.
All right, we're gonna take a few here. All right, you ready? One, two, three. Say, "We love the volunteer." All right. Got it. Thank you, guys.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to turn it over to our friends in the Police Auxiliary Service Awards. Adam.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Auxiliary police members, if you could join me at the podium. We're here tonight to recognize volunteers for the years of dedicated service in the Police Auxiliary Program. A program that no longer exists as a state was tasked with setting standards for the certification years ago, and it's not come to fruition today. These volunteers all assisted our city in a variety of ways. Special events, parades, routine patrol, traffic control, just to name a few. It is now my honor to recognize and introduce to the mayor and council the following former Police Auxiliary Program members. So, if we want to meet up with the mayor and get a certificate, that'd be great.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Yep. I can do that if we. Okay. We have Jason. And Don. Don? My eyesight's getting worse as the years go on. So, I'll go through the list of auxiliary people on our roster. I have a Martin Dahlstrom, Jr., 12 years of dedicated service. Jason Beal, 24 years of dedicated service. Ricky Benson, nine years of dedicated service. Bradley Hall, 16 years of dedicated service. Richard Langston, 20 years. Joseph Latowski, nine years. Todd Mangan, 18 years. Donald Roof, nine years. Jeffrey Spence, nine years. Gwen Johnson, Mounted Auxiliary Police, 21 years. And James Ray, Mounted Auxiliary Police, 23 years.
I will in a minute. All right, you ready? Perfect. Thank you, guys. You have an agenda?
Thank you, I'm all set.
Okay. After all of that celebrating, it takes us to the city manager's report this evening, Marcus.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. The first item under the manager's report is the customary setting of the 2023 city council meeting schedule. Looking at doing it the same as we've done it in years past, with meetings on the first and third Mondays starting at 6:00, except for the following months. January, having one meeting on the third Tuesday due to the Christmas, New Year's, and Martin Luther King holidays. So that's January 17th. In February, scheduling the second meeting for the third Tuesday, which would be the 21st. Again, it's because our offices are closed on that Monday for President's Day. In July, having the regular meeting scheduled for July 17th due to the Independence Day holiday. In September, having the first meeting on Tuesday, because Monday is Labor Day and again our offices are closed. And then, in November, having the meeting scheduled for November 20th due to the general city election that's earlier in the month. So, nothing new with the request.
Okay. So, does anybody have any questions, or does someone want to? Go ahead and make the motion to approve that.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to approve the calendar year 2023 council meeting schedule as presented.
I'll second that.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city. Council Engine 2 needs some help. During a fire, it sustained some damage. When responding to the call, it's primarily cosmetic. However, it does need to be repaired as soon as possible, because if you don't get those things tended to, that's when it turns into much bigger problems later on. Due to the unique nature of fire apparatus repair, the sealed bid was not practical, but we did receive two quotes. One is from Allied Fire Sales and Service out of Spring Lake in the amount of $9,662.43. The other is from Alexis, where the truck actually came from, out of Illinois, in the amount of $9,802. We have, or rather, we will be looking at our insurance carrier to help potentially cover this, but we're just not certain at this point in time. That being said, the recommendation this evening would be to one-way bid, and then two, go with Allied Fire Sales out of Spring Lake, Michigan for the repair work at $9,662.43. Funds are available in our general fund for this repair.
I'll make a motion to waive competitive bidding regarding the repair of Engine Number 2.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Then I'll make a motion to authorize Allied Fire Sales and Service to repair Engine Number 2 in accordance with their quote.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Moving along to the next item. This is regarding an agreement with the Cadillac Area Public Schools regarding the Chestnut Street Water Main Project. As members of council may, or I guess may not recall, this past fall, actually back in October, city council awarded a contract for the city to move forward with the relocation of a water line. This is all a part of the significant improvements that the school system is putting in place regarding the football field and their track. At the time, we had commented that in preliminary conversations with school officials, we were going to be recommending to our respective boards a 50-50 cost share. The school board did approve that just recently, and now here this evening is our request for city council to approve that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve the contract with the Cadillac Area City Schools for Chestnut Street Water Project Cost Sharing.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and members of the city council. If I may move on to the next.
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, taking us to the.
Yes, or adoption ordinance. So, everyone has in their packets, and Carrie, if you could maybe stick this on the TV, that would be great. And John, just don't go anywhere. I might ask you to jump in if I need you to bail me out of here. But, long story short, was at the last city council meeting, city council facilitated two public hearings. One was regarding a zoning recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding spatial separation between retail-type marijuana facilities within, and I'm just gonna call it our central business districts. So that would be both, you know, the downtown side of the community or the east side of town, as well as the west side of the community where, you know, you have that 115 M55 corridor area. The second part of that conversation was regarding a request to consider opening up the licensing component of our marijuana program in terms of creating an unlimited number of licenses on both medical and recreational or adult-use retail-type facilities. And so, you have to have, when you talk about this, you have to think about those in sort of one sentence, because the zoning recommendation was being brought forward for council's consideration at the same time as the licensing conversation was happening, so that the two go together in a way so that we're not, in a sense, opening up unintentionally Pandora's box of having the potential for there to be, you know, a huge surge of new retail-type facilities opening in the community. Because that is not, from a policy perspective, where the city council wanted to take this. City council chose at the last meeting not to take any action on the zoning component, and then did take action on the licensing component, and the action taken was to not make any changes, to not move anything forward. What that means is that there's a total of only four, and until such change should happen, there won't be anymore, only four retail-type licenses available, two for adult-use or recreational, both of which have been granted, and both facilities have been opened. Two for medical retail-type facilities, both of which have been granted, neither of which have been opened. What we have here for council to consider is really one of a few different options. One is do nothing. There's no requirement, there's no pressure, there's no timing for anything to happen. You have spatial separation language already in your current code, and there's no need to really do anything. The second thing you might consider doing is implementing the recommendation from the Planning Commission. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was for there to be. Yes, a spatial separation of 2,284 feet. If you were to do that, that first map, if you could, Carrie, go back on the screen, one more, there you go, shows you how there would still be availability, albeit limited, but availability for the additional two medical licenses to open up within the central business district areas of our community. The next option would be to look at some spatial separation distance of something different. Councilmember Ingalls, who unfortunately couldn't be here with us this evening, had actually suggested about going with a potentially larger radius, which is what that next map shows. And that next map shows a spatial separation of 3,000 feet. A concern that I have and staff have is that you potentially make it nearly impossible for the other available licenses to be active when you really make it a larger radius. And if the policy position of the city has changed in terms of the number of these types of facilities you want to see open, council might actually be better looking at reopening the medical-related licensing ordinance, and frankly, just removing it. You know, opting out versus looking at using zoning as a tool to prohibit that use. And, I mean, that's just my sort of two cents with this piece. So going back and just very quickly summarizing, where does that leave you guys tonight? A, you can do nothing, and you'll be fine. If something happens in the state and all of a sudden they open up the floodgates, I promise, as I say that, I hate to say I promise, but I promise, we'll still have an option of considering doing something. I doubt it would be something where the state does a change that all of a sudden makes us have to jump through a hoop immediately. We'll have a chance to adjust. But, so, first option is you do nothing. Second option is, is that you implement recommendation from the Planning Commission as is. Or third, you change that recommendation, you know, you implement something as amended. So I will, yeah, shut up and ask those questions.
So you were both at the Planning Commission meeting, right, that came up with this?
I was.
Yeah. So, was the thinking to have this zoning, if we were to open up the licenses? Or was the, were they separate issues to the planning? What I'm asking is, did the Planning Commission put this in separately, or was it?
No, the Planning Commission had the context of the locations of the two medical licenses and the properties that are or were under option agreement by those companies. And so that number.
We wanted to make sure that we would be able to honor the people who competed and had the licenses in place.
Yeah.
And it didn't open up the floodgates to allow any more than the four licenses that we had already granted.
I think that was a good question. I'm a big believer in avoiding the unintended consequences, love. Since the other part didn't go, I kind of think we're probably better off to just leave it as is. And then if something comes up later, we can consider it rather than stepping on something we don't expect.
My first thinking was, put this in place in case all of a sudden things change in the state, but we can move quickly.
But if they move, if they change in the state, then we've already done the legwork to be able to let them do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so we won't do anything.
So what kind of a motion do we need to make?
We don't need to make one, do we?
I don't think you need to make one, but if I may suggest one, perhaps the motion would be to just stay the course, stay where we're at.
I'll make a motion that we take no action regarding rezoning on this issue at this time.
And I support that.
Councilmember King.
Yes.
Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls. Mayor Philkins.
Absolutely, thank you.
I always, you know, when the Planning Commission does something and comes with a recommendation, because they do so much legwork on it, that I, you know, I like to support theirs, so that's why I asked if it was connected.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Glad we were able to get all of that framed and perfectly implemented in that way. So, the next item is a request to set a public hearing for January 17th, 2023. This is in regard to granting an easement to Consumers Energy Company for electric facilities. The sort of long and short of it is, this has to deal with the original city water well field that's located essentially adjacent to CCI in the original City of Cadillac Industrial Park. As everybody, I believe, knows, we are finishing up the construction of the 44 Road Well Field. As a part of that project, it does include some demolition of facilities, the original well field. And because of that, the current way that power is being fed to that site is going away. We still need power to be on that site, not just for us in the interim, but because we want to make sure that that site is ultimately gonna be as marketable and as available as possible to have infrastructure there. And so this request for an easement will ultimately make that feasible. And this evening, we're requesting the public hearing date set, so we can go through that process accordingly.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to adopt the resolution to introduce ordinance to approve granting of an easement to Consumers Energy Company for electric facilities and set a public hearing for January 17th, 2023.
Councilmember Shippers.
Yes.
Ellen Bass.
Yes.
Ingalls. King.
Yes.
Mayor Philkins.
Yes, motion carries.
Okay, tonight in our packet, we do have the minutes from the last Downtown Development Authority for us to review at our leisure. And at this time, we'll open the floor for our second public comment. Seeing no one, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move to the good of the order, should anyone have anything this evening.
Go ahead here.
Just happy Hanukkah, tonight's the first night of Hanukkah. And to all those who celebrate, happy solstice to everybody and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. It looks so festive. Are people, are there more lights up in the community than last year? It just seems.
In the Commons?
Not just in the Commons, but people's homes seem really decorated, and I notice a lot of smiling faces, so spread the cheer.
You should come over to Linden Street and see the house.
Oh, yeah.
Right down by my place.
And then you come over to River.
And then you come over to River and, right, River and Amblack is going to town. We always go do the door.
Okay, anybody else? All right, if not, we'll go ahead and adjourn.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas, everybody.